Okay, good afternoon. I'll call to order the Committee of the Hall for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Is there any additions or deletions? Okay, will somebody please move that the September 24th, 2024 Committee of the Hall meeting be adopted? Now, so we, now's our plan on favor, carried. And I need somebody to move that the adoption of the Committee of the Hall meeting minutes for August 13th, 2024 be adopted. That's our plan, it counts our way. Any business arising from the minute? Okay, get right into it. Block one, one, permissive tax exemption applications in grant lieu of municipal property tax. I'm trying to go over to staff.
Thank you very much through the Chair, through the Mayor, just for the public in the gallery. A couple of little bits of housekeeping, a lot of rules, which kind of helps us flow through our meetings, so to say. So council have a number of different types of meetings, just in case you've never been here before. This meeting is called the Committee of the Hall, which is a general conversation. Council don't vote on these meetings. This is for general discussion, so that we can all kind of back and forth and have that. But there are rules to that as well. So if you're standing up to speak, just put your name, who you're going to represent, and your kind of questions. Who through the Chair, who through the Mayor, if that's okay. If it exceeds longer than expected, we don't want partying backwards and forwards. It's not arguments, it's not question time with the Prime Minister, it's not what we're here to do. The role we are here to try and do is get as much information about it as possible. Appreciate everyone coming out, thanks very much for that. And I'll pass over to Joni to explain where we are just now.
Yeah, so would that allow me to do a presentation?
Sorry, if I could through the Mayor. The purpose of this is not so much for the associations to do a presentation to council. Counsel, if counsel has questions about your association, they'll be able to ask you. That's when you can respond to it. It's not really, yeah, it's not a presentation meeting.
So what, where would the appropriate place to make a presentation be?
That would typically be a delegation to council on a regular council meeting to make a presentation to them.
Can I ask, sorry, through here, what kind of presentation?
It's, I've got two pages, basically, of information on the Lilawet Norio Curling Club that might be useful to council and to everybody else.
Let's see where we're kind of go to with the meeting, as long as it's not a stand-up 24-page.
Oh, no, no, I want this, I want to make this brief.
So through the Mayor, that will be a decision of council if they would like to accept a presentation. So thank you through the Mayor. Permissive tax exemptions, for anybody that's not aware of them. Permissive tax exemptions are at the complete discretion of council. There's no requirement to grant an exemption, there's no requirement to grant 100% exemption. There's no requirement to grant any or all applications. Council has recently adopted as well a policy for grant in lieu of municipal taxes, the purpose of which is to transition away from permissive tax exemptions where appropriate, so that the other property owners within the class of property that a property belongs to aren't taking up the burden of the additional taxes that they have to pay on behalf of organizations that are exempt from regional district, hospital district, school district, police, all of those taxes. So the purpose of the municipal grant in lieu of property taxes would be that an organization could get a financial break on their municipal property taxes only. They would still be required to pay all of the other taxing authorities' taxes, so that's police tax, school tax, hospital tax, regional district, B.C. assessment, and the municipal finance authority. So those would all still be required to be paid by properties that are granted, a municipal grant in lieu of taxes. So hopefully that sort of clears up any of the difference. There are a number of properties that are statutorily exempt from property taxes through legislation. An easy example is a church. The church building and the land on which the church sits are exempt from taxation by legislation. The district has nothing to do with it. We don't get an assessed value for it, they don't pay tax on it. The land surrounding the church or any other improvements on that property are still subject to taxation, and that's where permissive tax exemptions come into play. So they request that council exempt them from all or a portion of the property tax that would otherwise be assessed on the surrounding areas. So having said that, happy to answer any questions from council. Otherwise, I will turn it over to council to do with as you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I guess, through the Mayor, a question of clarification on the churches. You said that the churches, the actual church building plus the land on which it sits are exempt by law or legislation and therefore are not assessed. In our package, we have a number of church properties with values attached to them. Is that, is it my incorrect understanding that that has been everything beyond the actual church building and the land on which the building sits?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Joni, the Chair.
I'm welcome. This is the first one right in front here. No more questions. Okay, so I'm going to get started with these, but I would like to ask council how they feel about, if there is somebody here that would like to speak on a property, how they would feel about that. Are you? I'm good. I'm curious if it's more than what's in the background that we've got copies of. Yeah, we do have copies of some of the information, but if you could add to it or whatever. I'm okay with that. Some because it might be extenuating circumstances. And I just want to remind everybody that this is our first go at this with this in this sort of a layout. Generally, we're just, over the past 10 years, we have just been saying yes to everything. So just keep it up with us in finding this new ground. So I'm going to start with 633 Main Street, Lilawet Learning Community Society. Okay? Would you like to speak to it?
Well, I read the package that the staff person prepared and sent to you folks, and I think that's the piece that's missing is that it is like 100% our goal to pay taxes on that site in the future. It's just, this is our first year. I mean, I've been Chair of the Board for 10 years, and when I first, when I first came on, our budget was $30,000. And we rented, oh, we had a free room from the school district. And, you know, making this move and growing our services, buying this building on Main Street, the whole point is to develop self-sufficiency for the nonprofit sector in Lilawet, that a lot of the groups that are working out of that building are providing really important services here. And we're trying to do this so that as nonprofit groups, we're not so just like in the grant cycle. We're trying to generate income, but we're not. It's like, you know, the numbers don't always look as good after a few, you know, few months of operations you were hoping they were going to. So I do hope that, but I believe in taxes, I believe in contributing to our community. And yeah, I'll just, I hope that you'll consider it for this year, and I'm glad it's a yearly reconsideration. Thank you. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. Through the Mayor, if I could just clarify to any of the applicants, council was all provided with all of the information that you sent in your application. It's just not all on the public agenda. So anything that was written, council has been provided.
Okay. Lots of reading. Okay. Any comments? Counselor McNary.
Is there any wages being paid over on this property? Or do you have, if you have any employees, I'm sorry?
We do, like, if you look at the finances, everything's project-based. Like, right now, the employees are pretty much all being paid through grant, like some kind of grant. Like, we have Elder Connect, and that's money from United Way. We have a staff person doing that job. And then we have a staff person who's being paid by Law Foundation, who's doing the Littlewet Indigenous Court. We don't, that's part of what we're trying to build in, is like from the rent of everybody having enough money to pay a person to really be in charge of the building, but we don't actually have, like, a staff person, exactly. Does that get what you were asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so the municipal portion is 2,184. The total of the other authorities is 1,145. So we have a choice. So we can, we can do the grant in lieu of, which would mean that they would pay the 1,145, and we would forgive the 2,184.
Yes, through the Mayor, approximately based on 2024's assessed values and tax rates. We don't know exactly what next year is yet.
Yes, so this is all-ish at the end. 1,145-ish dollars. So yes, but that would be one choice. The other choice would be to do the entire, I keep looking at Joni because I could make sure I'm doing this right, that it could be the entire amount, or it could be one of the other alternatives or recommendations. So does anybody want to make a?
Through the Mayor. Reading through the package, an excellent package, and I enjoyed reading that. I would like to propose that the Lilawet Learning Society, as it is their first-time application, they are starting up as a new nonprofit. For this one, I would like to be helpful. Some tax exemption.
Okay. Seconded.
Clarify through the Mayor, are you 100% permissive tax exemption or just the municipal?
100% permissive.
Thank you.
Seconded. Counselor DeGrae. Any persons comments? Oh, Counselor Reed.
Through the Mayor, I just have a question for Joni. Can you do, like, the grant and move for municipal and then partial for permissive?
Through the Mayor, I'm sorry. So it's actually, it's a really good question, and it took me driving back because I brought my own laptop for the meeting to figure out a way. Yes, it could technically be done. What council would be doing is doing permissive tax exemption, say, for 50% of the assessed value. That would exempt them from basically 50% of all of their taxes. And then there would be a municipal grant in lieu for the other 50% district taxes that they would otherwise market. It's a little convoluted.
So what I heard was that that would mean this one, that the municipal would be 100%, and then there would be 50% of the other.
That would be an option, yes. Or 60%, or 5%, or, yes.
And each one can be different based on, again, thank you for your patience, because like I said, we're first time here.
Correct this. Okay.
Say, we have a motion on the table, Counselor DeGrae.
I'm just curious how council wishes to proceed with these deliberations in terms of going through each and every application. It sort of feels like it's a beauty contest, and it's a beautiful crowd here, so. And I wonder if there's not some policies or general principles that we want to discuss without getting into the details of each applicant. We have a number of places of worship. Maybe we can say generally that places of worship, we're going to go this and that direction. And with that comes a decision on all these places of worship. And I think we have a recreation facility, and we have a community facility. Like I said, it may make it a little bit easier and to set general guidelines that, you know, this council for this year sort of endorses. And that could provide the community also with some guidance in terms of when they come back next year in terms of what is, you know, what this council is looking for or not. And because like I said, going through each and every application based on, you know, what we feel, you know, sort of, I think needs a little bit more depth.
Okay. For me personally, I think that everybody is different in that they provide a different service, and they are all nonprofit, and some of them are 3,000 and some of them are 30,000. So the difference is huge. And if you paint everybody with that same brush, I think that would be very difficult for the 30,000 dollar ones as opposed to 3,000. So that's why I prefer to do it one at a time, but it's really up to council. What do you guys think? Time time? One on time?
One on time.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for four minutes. Seconded. Do you want to provide another proposal, or don't we have to give them?
So we have to finish this first.
All right, let's do all in favor. All in favor? Okay, I'll tell you, you're in motion. I'm good with this one being all of it. So all opposed? Motion carried. Okay, 603 Main Street, Seventh Day Adventist Church. Be quick. Okay. So Seventh Day Adventist Church, a total estimated property taxes of $338. Municipal levy is 151, and total other authorities are $187. So again, it's not for the church or the-ish. It's not for the church itself or the land it sits on, but the boundary around it.
The surrounding.
Surrounding, okay. So does anybody want to make a motion to this one? Counselor Reed. I'd like to make a motion that we give them a grant in lieu of the municipal levy. Okay, seconded. I mean, how much questions? All in favor? All opposed?
Sorry, I'm still trying to catch up. Yeah, all voting.
Okay. Motion carried. Okay, 577 Main Street, United Church of Canada. The white church on the corner. So it's a total property taxes of 581, municipal levy is 260, and other is $322. Does anybody want to speak to Main Street? The white church? No? Okay. Seeing none, does somebody want to make a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion that we do the grant in lieu for this one. Seconded, Counselor McNary. Further questions, comments? Counselor Reed, is the, for the municipal portion?
Yes, the grant in lieu is always for the municipal portion. Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
1147 Main Street, the Lilawet Gospel Chapel. Anybody here to speak to the Lilawet Gospel Chapel? Total estimated property taxes in the amount of 379-ish dollars. Municipal is 169, total other is 210. Goes to show you that our taxes are not the highest always. But does anybody want to make a motion? Counselor Reed.
There again, I'd like to make the motion that we do grant in lieu for municipal levy.
Okay, seconded by Counselor McNary. Questions, comments? All in favor? Okay, 251 Taylor Road, Cage Temple Society. Anybody here to speak to it? Seeing none? Okay, we have total estimated property taxes, $1,891. Municipal portion is 842, total other authorities is $1,049-ish.
I'll make a motion for grant in lieu.
Grant in lieu? Seconded, Counselor Reed. Further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Heard. One more, 16 Main Street, Roman Catholic Bishop of Camlips. Anybody here to speak to it? You're here to speak to it. Okay, total estimated property taxes of $3,195. Municipal portion is 1,424, other authorities is 1,778. Counselor Reed.
Oh, I was, through the Mayor, I was just going to say that by the looks of this, for the places of worship, it looks like we are going as to, Counselor McNary had first said that maybe they should have been all lumped together for those ones. But for this one, yeah, I will be going for the grant in lieu as well.
Okay, seconded. Counselor Reed. Counselor DeGrae.
I have a question through the Mayor. The staff, again, just out of curiosity, because we, contrary to the other places of worship, the assessed value is here much more significant, and therefore the exemption is much more significant. And I'm not really sure what drives that, that change or that difference between the sites. I don't know, I'm not very familiar with the site. I mean, it's a church, it has maybe a little bit more land. But is it, are there differences as, or do these differences come about because of either successful or unsuccessful appeals to B.C. assessment? And if this value would be somehow appealed to the B.C. assessment and lowered, as it is the place of worship, which typically don't carry a lot of real estate value, would that have any impact on the tax burden for the rest of the community?
So, number one, the assessed value on that property is significantly higher than the assessed value of the majority of the other places of worship. So that's why the property taxes are higher. Your question as to an appeal depends on a few different factors. The biggest factor being when B.C. assessment makes a decision on the appeal. If the decision is made before we get the revised rule, then we already know about it. And yes, the other properties make up the difference. If the assessed value goes down, we know we need to get X number of dollars of municipal tax. We have a little less to get from this person, so we have to get it from the rest of the people. But sometimes appeals don't get resolved for a number of years, in which case it doesn't directly affect the other properties until the appeal is decided on. And then the same is true, but in a more significant amount because you've got a number of years. I don't know if I.
Just as a follow-up, I mean, if the assessed value would come down to $100,000 instead of $500,000, would that affect any, any of the tax burden of the remaining taxpayers?
More than.
Sorry, sorry. If a full permissive tax exemption was given.
If a full permissive tax exemption was given, and the assessed value was appealed and came back below. That's, okay. Sorry, I have to think this through. No, because we were already expecting to get X number of dollars from properties excluding that one.
So if I, if I understand correctly, I'm not really sure whether I do or not, that the assessed value from properties that get a permissive tax exemption has no impact on the burden of the other taxpayers. So when that's high or low, so one of the few of the churches had valuations of 56,000, and this one has 532. But ultimately, that number does not matter for the motive tax that we need to collect to the other taxpayers.
It matters in that, just this, because we're looking at, what is it, 116. It matters in that now the other taxpayers have to make up $3,200 because if they were not exempt, sorry, the municipal portion is 1,400. If they were not exempt, we would get $1,400 from them, because they are, the other properties have to make up $1,400.
What I'm trying to go is, would it be beneficial for anyone involved if these assessments of public places of worship are low or one or not? It's, it's one that makes a difference or not. And so that's what I'm trying to understand for myself as we look at these various applications where the B.C., the assessed value is either very low or very high, right? And so, anyway, but I'm not really sure on that, I'm going further with my thinking.
Regardless of the assessed value of any property, the district needs to make, say, make loosely, $100,000. If we make that $100,000 from 10 properties or from seven, because council exempted three, those seven now have to make up the difference.
Within that class.
Within the class.
Counselor McNary.
I was just gonna talk to Counselor, also for a minute, about why the assessment is higher on the, we're talking about. There's two extra buildings, there's a host and there's a little hall on the side, and it's a big lot. So they're gonna house him.
And for clarity, this assessed value that's in the package and in the agenda does not include the residence. That is a separate assessed value that we can't give an exemption to. So it's not even under consideration to council.
So in this case, it's just precisely the size of the lot?
And forgive me if I'm mistaken, but I believe that this property is an additional lot beside it.
Right, right.
It's quite a large property.
All right, further questions or? Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a question. In this whole Grant and Lou, moved by Councilor Flann and seconded by Councilor Weave.
Okay, there's no further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, 178 Mountview Road, Lilwet Memorial Curling Club.
Okay, I think we should try and keep it to just-
I'll try and keep it to 10 minutes, I'm sure I can get-
Oh, no, no, I said two.
You're asking for a lot. Okay, I'm Richard Smith. I'm here on behalf of the Lilwet Memorial Curling Club, and we're here to ask for a full tax exemption. Now, this club has existed for 65 years. We were built by volunteers who wanted to provide recreation for the people of Lilwet. And for the most part, we've been self-sufficient. All our work is done by members. We were shut down by COVID just before our major year-end bonds bill, who was our most important fundraiser. Financially, we were devastated. We were closed down for three and a half years because even after we were allowed to reopen, we were hit with major repairs and upgrade expenses. Members of our club and some who are not members stepped up with volunteer labor and financial contributions. My wife and I contributed $1,000 to help pay most standing bills, and I know others gave much more, much, much more to help keep us afloat. Last January, we managed to reopen, and we were surprised and pleased by the level of community support we received. We ran a very successful April Fool's bonds bill, which means we have barely enough money to open this hall. So why should you give us a tax exemption? Number one in my mind is that any level of tax will effectively shut us down and rob this community of an important recreational activity. Doing so would also have a major effect on the Legion who have partnered with us. The Legion is planning upgrades to our kitchen, which will also benefit other community groups. That would be lost. I have heard that the seniors group is considering using our building, which they would do for minimal or no cost. We've always been community-minded. We, in the past, we provided free ice and instruction to the school kids. Our community organized, other community organizations have used our facilities at times rent-free. As a facility, we should be compared to the rec center. We both provide recreational services to the community. Most cities and towns actually own their curling rigs. For example, I believe Ashcroft owns a curling rig and the club just runs it. If the district were to run our facility or own it, I'm sure that the cost of one employee would exceed the amount you receive in taxes. We provide curling to Lilwet, physical and social activity that's open to the whole community. The social importance of that cannot be underrated. It's something you can enjoy all your life. Here we go. Lilwet Memorial Curling Club provides that at what is really a little cost to the taxpayer. A couple of other considerations. We're one of the few rental facilities available. We can be used in emergencies as a cooling and relief center. But that could all be gone. We cannot just afford to pay tax at any level. If we don't get a full tax exemption, we'll have to close. That will affect our members, the members of the Legion, possibly the seniors. I suggest it will affect the potential of the whole town. We need more reasons for people to come live and stay in Lilwet, not fewer. Taking the Lilwet Memorial Club might be a, taking taxes from the Lilwet Memorial might be penny wise, but it would certainly be pound foolish. When you consider whether or not to give us a tax exemption, do not only consider our cost to the district, consider the value we bring to this community. Do not be like the politician of whom it was said, "Can you use the cost of everything but the value of nothing?" I contend that the value that we bring to the people of Lilwet so much exceeds those taxes, Lilwet will be much poorer, a much poorer place if we are gone. We need time to get back on our feet. We need a total exemption, not for just a year, but for at least three. Then we need to meet and talk again. Thank you for your consideration.
I appreciate the comments and, Mr. Smith, I do want to recognize that it is not an ask to this council, it is an ask to the taxpayers of this community. You're asking the taxpayers for donation. That is what a permissive tax exemption is. Essentially, all other taxpayers will have to foot the bill. So as you stand here and implore us, what worth it is how we justify that to our community, to our taxpayers, to the taxpayers that will now see the increase in their tax bill to overcome the taxes that are not going to be collected from the curling club. And like I said, so you have to realize that it has to come from somewhere. It is not something that we can just sort of wave away and then just be fine and cool. Others will have to come up and step up with their donations. So that's the, that's the, sort of the contemplations that we have on this side of the table. There's 1,150 taxpayers represented on this side of the table. And as you stand, we have to figure out and to see well that I would be acceptable to those 1,150 taxpayers to come up with this amount. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you stand with your case.
Councilor McNary? I'm curious, and I'm not looking into specifics, but the rental income, is that all from the Legion or is that from multiple rentals? Because it seems really low to me.
It's from the, it's from the Legion.
Is that for the year or?
That was for nine months.
For nine months? And do you do other rentals?
We did, but we did it so reasonably that it really wasn't worth our time to do it. We used to rent it for like a hundred bucks for a night, which most of the time we had more damage than then what's a hundred bucks worth of work.
Well, that leads me to another question. So when you're saying it could be used, could be used as cooling and relief center, has it ever?
No, but it was built for that. Originally, the design has enough bathrooms and enough heat and cooling to run that whole facility for that, but it's never been used for that.
But people would have to be there for it, right?
Sorry?
People would have to be in attendance.
Yeah, like if Litten needed us again or whatever, they definitely could have went there instead of the rec center, for sure. If that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Councilor Flann?
Can I ask, have you tried to put your VC assessment? That's the wording I want there. Have you spoken to them about getting your assessment lowered?
I don't think we have gotten that, no.
No, is it something you would consider? Is like looking at this, like it's a beautiful facility. I mean, you're assessed at $1.7 million, which which I think to reading on something there, it's still saying that it's been improvements, but there haven't been any improvements that big since the building was made.
Richard, I don't know if you know, but I think when we had originally rebuilt, it was like $500,000 probably to rebuild the whole building. So somehow in 20 years, we've become $1.7 million, and we haven't done any improvements at all other than we got a donation from the Caige Bad rebuilt our roof for us, but other than that.
Councilor Weave? I just have two more quick questions. So one is, I think you've been getting 100% tax exemption for quite a few years. Not sure how many.
Probably 65.
I was going to say. Been a long time, and like the Lilwet learns, do you anticipate paying taxes ever? Or do you anticipate coming back in three years and saying, "Can we have another 100% exemption for three years?" Because, I mean, absolutely everybody that's hit by COVID and everybody was, is recovering and probably will be for the next, God knows how long.
Yeah, I'm going to point out once again that, you know, if we don't get 100% tax rebate, we just won't be able to afford to operate. I don't know what we're going to do. Give the building to you, I suppose? Catch, okay? I don't know what we do. We're going to shut, we'll have to shut down. We just will. There's no ifs and buts about it. It's not an option for us because we won't have the money. We just won't have the money.
Well, I don't want to deal with the banter back and forth on that point because it's really, this is like, also De Bruin said, this is all about what the taxpayers have to come up with to fund.
But when you compare us to the rec center, the rec center has value, and it costs money to run.
I understand that, it's just that they don't want to get into a debate here, I really don't. I'm just wondering, like, there's a lot of, how do I put it in a nice way? There is no nice way. It could be used for this, it could be this, it could be that. But nobody's actually looked into any of that.
And actually, maybe not to question.
You know, can you just hang on for one minute? Like, I know when I was a part of the Legion, I did go and get the taxes reduced. It doesn't look like any of that has ever been done, like over all these years because you had the exemption from the district. So I get that. And then I'd like to ask our staff, if it was used as cooling and relief center, do you get money back from the province for any of that stuff or is it minimal?
Thank you, through the chair, it's fairly minimal, depending on what we get through the EOC. So if we do open it up as an EOC center, we can get funding for it, but it's fairly minimal. It would cover staff costs and maybe our rental.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Unfortunately, I can just have the one speaker. Councilor Flann?
I just want to ask, and it's probably sort of something that's probably not probably being popular here. So with some of the questions back and forth, it does seem that you've been working totally towards self-sufficiency. Like this Councilor Weave said, sort of, you have 100% there. Haven't looked into VC assessment. Mentioned about the rentals in which it's also even trying to make it affordable for the whole town, which as Mr. Reynolds has said, sort of $100, but it has cost you more. If we, I, we were to propose giving you 100% for this year on the, and I don't know if we could do conditions, that next year you come back with some actual plans as showing that you have been really trying toward self-sufficiency, going to VC assessment, seeing if you can get your taxes reduced, looking into your rental agreements and everything to try and do that. That would be something that I would put forward if there was, next year when we come back, if there is an actual, to show that there has been, tried to be some strides in actually coming to more self-sufficiency.
Yes. You can see that's certainly being possible.
Okay, we shouldn't make the motion, sit down. Yeah, don't make it, yeah. So as you know, we cannot make any commitments to three years, this is a one-year thing. I like that it's, I like that it's for the seniors and I also like the fact that the Legion is in there, the World Canadian Legion. It was, it was so sad to lose that in our community, that building. So when it was resurrected within the curling rig, that was quite near and dear to me as I think it is to all of us in this community. So for that reason, you know, I, I'm leaning to get towards the whole one. But I also agree with Councilor Flann in that, you know, VC assessment, rental income, I'd like to give you guys a chance to let the Legion, you know, kind of establish some roots and maybe find other ways to raise money and help with these taxes. The cooling and relief heating place, I think, I think that's a good idea too because, I mean, there was one in town, but when it came down to it, it was, we opened up the rec center and did it here. So I kind of like that there's an option there. And I think it's large enough in, you know, in the form that if something happened with Litten again or any other community, or Goldbridge or Braylon, you know, we could look at that facility. And honestly, I don't want to take it over, you know, as part of the district property. And I like that there's multiple layered nonprofits within that. So I am, I'll make the motion for one year for a permissive tax for this property. Question, are you seconding? Seconding, okay. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a few comments on the table. It is, it's true that there's many curling rigs that are municipally owned. It was built at Ashcroft, and I'm sure that the financial contribution of the, and that means that, you know, Ashcroft, it's not subject to any sort of tax. And I'm sure that the Ashcroft municipality makes some sort of contribution as well. And it is, in any circumstances, recreation centers, curling rigs and that sort of stuff, to make them financially viable is almost impossible. We see with museums as well, sectors within our economy that are very feasible to run as a business or even at a zero level. So some sort of support, and we see with our skating rink here, our pool here, we see with other, you know, we have soccer fields and that sort of stuff. And all that is maintained by the district with taxpayer money. With that in mind, I'm kind of minimal to the idea of seeing this as just another recreation center. The alternative of owning it is not one that I will look forward to. Very happy that there is an organization that tends to it with all its volunteer time. And I'm conscious of the fact that, you know, it's, it is, it requires an $11,000 contribution of the taxpayers of Lilwet to make that happen. And that the, that the district is contributing $21,000 to this recreation facility without, you know, I'm supportive of giving that permissive tax exemption, even the function it plays for our community.
Thank you. Councilor McNary?
I'm in support of 100% also, but I would like to see that tax assessment thing. I would like to see them working on that for the, for the community also. And because that's basically what it's about. And there's different reasons there that, there's some pretty, how you put it, there's some pretty good people there, somebody is. And I think they can put them forward, and we'll talk about it next year again. But I'm also 100% in favor of complete.
Counselor Lee.
Through the mayor. I don't want to criticize boards or anything else, but I think that when you've been on boards for a long time, you get kind of oxidative. And the more you get, the more you expect. So I really wanted to see some work put into going to get your assessment lowered or whatever. It takes a little bit of paperwork to have a meeting over here at the, whatever that hotel is, I can't remember. But anyway, it, it's not a hard thing. But it does take people to step up to their positions on the board. And I'd also like to see the curling rake out there doing some more fundraising and whatnot within the community. I know you, Stu, your bonds deal set only really includes some people that curl, the people from out of town and the people that go to watch them. And I'm not a curler, so I'm not gonna even say what I think. But I really would like to see us out there trying to make this happen. Because I don't think it can go on forever in this small community. Sorry. Thank you.
Any further questions or questions? Okay, a whole question, all in favor? Heard. Oh, I, sorry, I did not see your handouts. Okay, I thought it was the first time. All right, 272 Main Street, Lillawet and District Rescue Society. Okay, we've got total estimated property taxes of $3,584. Municipal levy is $23.50. And other authorities are $1,232-ish.
Thank you, Your Worship, Don Blakey, Deputy Chief of Lillawet District Rescue, also Chairman of the Society Board. Through you, Mayor, and to members of council, we are here today hoping that you will consider us for full permissive tax exemption based on what we bring to the community. We are 100% volunteer organization. We do get some funding from the district a little bit through taxes. We also get some funding through the Comanche Lillawet Regional District. However, the vast amount of our money comes from the callouts that we do. ENBC pays us approximately a rate of $465 now for the truck. One truck, we do run two trucks. They cannot provide the members with anything. We are 100% volunteer. Our board gets nothing. Our members get nothing. Our chiefs get nothing. And with the monies that we bring in, we have to pay for our radio licenses. We have to pay for maintenance on our vehicles, fuel on our vehicles. We have to pay to maintain and upkeep all, upkeep all of our equipment. For example, we just signed a contract to replace only six sets of turnout gear. And we went shopping for that, and that is a $2,000 bill and beyond, $2,000, sorry, per set. So $12,000 for six sets. We are doing a rescue course, rope rescue course next week, which is also $12,000 to get 12 of us recertified in our over the back rescue. So while I realize $3,500 for a total permissive exemption is maybe not a lot, and maybe that we should be paying some, that $3,500 pays for one-third of our course that's coming up next week, which is good to go ahead regardless. But we hope that you will seriously consider the permissive exemption for what services that we do provide to the community. And I stand ready to answer any questions that you or council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee. Do you still apply to the Legion, to the property fund to get money for some of your gear and your horses? And I'm not sure what they all cover anymore.
Yes, we do still apply to the Legion Property Fund. We fundraise on a regular basis. We have two very wonderful ladies that are looking for and apply for every grant that they can find under the sun to help us. And every little bit helps. We just spent over $10,000 getting our building re insulated because of the fact that it was, it can heat quite excessively. So we managed to get some grants and some funding. We did change the heating in the building from propane and got you two heat pumps. And we just had the roof resealed and we just had our 24 spray foam insulation installed to bring down our costs. So we're doing that through fundraising, grants, anything we can find to try and make sure that we lessen the cost that we have for everything else.
And could I ask how many members you have? It probably says in this package, but I read this package.
Currently active on duty is 15, and we just have four more people sign up in the last two weeks. So we're hopeful that they're gonna come forward. We do have a former member looking to return. So we're hoping to be back up to approximately 20 members here within the next month or so. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to grant the Lillawet and District Rescue Society a full permissive tax exemption while they're locked up in the state.
Okay, Counselor Flynn. You're gonna second that? Okay, Counselor, can you resecond it? Counselor Flynn, do that.
There was a comment to Joni. So with all of the societies in that, they are in a specific class. So the search and rescue is in, I guess, a class six. Do societies, something like this, have to stay in that class or can they be put into a different class?
Through the mayor, that is entirely up to BC assessments. Classes, like assessed classes of properties, doesn't even have anything to do with our zoning or anything. BC assessment decides all of that. I would suggest that they probably don't fit in a different class. Class six covers business slash other, other means. You don't really fit anywhere else.
No, I guess where my swirling was going here was that if we could take them out of a class because they do do such essential work through the community and all the other communities. And so that that class wasn't responsible, that the whole community could be.
Through the mayor, it doesn't work that way. If you move from a class six to a different class, it's that other class that makes up the difference. So it, it, it never really spreads across everybody equally. It impacts the properties that are within the same class. I would however strongly suggest that you may ask BC assessment why you are not class eight, which is nonprofit.
Happy to do so. Thank you for leaving us.
I was just grateful thinking.
What I find going is all of these, you know, services we all use somehow, and we all appreciate them in town. And we do this one, but it's the only one that we hope that now was used or needs ever. But without, if there's no more comments or questions, a call question, all in favor of a full permissive? Heard. Thank you. Okay, 560 Highway 12, Lillawet Congregation of Jehovah Witnesses. Anyone here to speak to it? Okay, total estimated property taxes of $928, municipal levy of 414, and total other authorities of $514-ish dollars. Okay, so any comments or questions? Somebody wanna make a motion? Counselor DeBryn?
Make the motion to grant the Lillawet Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses a grant in lieu permission for their property on Highway 12.
Through the mayor, that's for the municipal portion or permissive?
The municipal portion.
Thank you.
Presenting one.
And Counselor McCarry is seconding that. Counselor Lee, question over. Okay, any further comments or questions? Call question in favor. Heard. Number 2478, Hollywood Crescent, Lake House Ministry Center. Anybody here to speak to it? None. Total estimated property taxes, $530. Municipal portion is 237, other portion is 293. Any comments or questions? Or somebody wanna make a motion? Counselor Lee.
Let's make a motion that we do a grant in lieu of the municipal levy.
Seconded by Counselor McCarry. And none, all in favor? Heard. Last but not least, 709 Airport Road, East Lillawet Recreation Society. Anybody here to speak to it? Wait, wrong speaker.
I can see on here, you got the wrong address. Oh, they did?
Yes.
It used to be 505.
Yes.
Anyway. The Lillawet Recreation Society, all we do is supply a service to the community with the rifle range or the, the gun range. The, we now have the motocross there and we have the riding club. And it's been there like forever since, what, 1955?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's always been a service to this town. We do service for the police officers of this town practice there, get their qualifications and everything. We do provide a service to keep the kids off the street, ride their motocross here and ride their horses. And we seem to keep out of everybody's sight and keep a low profile and keep track of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor DeBryn.
Got a question for staff. Under each of the packages, the ownership is listed Crown Provincial and East Lillawet Recreation Society. Was Crown provincial? What was that indicating?
And, and I'm sorry if I'm mistaken, I believe they actually lease just a portion of a much bigger property that belongs to the province. Yes, we lease 20 or 27 acres off of the provincial government for another 25 years. So we do it in 30-year leases through the government.
Okay, then just to, again, just for my own understanding. So this is, we're charging a municipal taxes where they're, they're being assessed on a lease on provincial crown land?
Because they're a leaseholder on provincial land, it is still taxable. We actually have two properties that the district is a leaseholder on that we're still going to have to do a permissive tax exemption on. Yeah, even though they're, in the one case, I believe it's provincially owned as well. We would have to pay taxes on it because we're only considered a leaseholder, we're not a title holder.
Counselor Flynn.
I'll turn to the chair. One thing that I didn't see in the application here too is that the East Lillawet Rec Society also opened themselves up to emergencies for the evacuation of any livestock, horses, goats, everything there. So they do actually help as well in, in emergency situations. So I'm not sure if that is something that there is granting for or anything like that to being opened up for emergency center for animals. It just wasn't mentioned. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
All right then, Counselor McCarry.
I'll make a motion to 100%.
Counselor Flynn. Question, comment?
I think the society maybe should look at grant from the government because they do look after livestock over there for that fire.
Could we get, is there grants available on Crown lease? I, I, I'm, Joni.
All right, Counselor DeBryn.
Because there's no improvement, there's no real, I think, to address to my left. There's no real improvements to all of the property, are there?
We have made improvements in the last few years. At one time, we did have the fire department using the property in the middle. And they moved up to the airport and after that, we did improve it by putting the motocross track in.
But there's no buildings or?
We don't really need buildings.
There's no water.
We don't really need water on the gun range. We do need water on the motocross track. But it is being supplied. I believe the water is being trucked in for that. And the riding club, they do have water on their property. They have washrooms and everything else. Of course, we have porta potty and, yeah, but we are, we do always keep it up. We have work parties to keep the property so it doesn't, isn't a fire hazard or anything else. We're always willing to, if, if we had a mass evacuation and we all had to go there, hey, that's where we would go.
Through the mayor, just in response to Counselor DeBruin's question, the majority of the assessed value is simply land. There's a small $15,000 assessment for improvements, which could even be a shed.
Counselor Lee.
Through the mayor, and I don't know if this is a question for Joni or, or Mike. Because it's a not-for-profit, could you not go to see if you could get it risen as well?
I would never try.
I was thinking it might be worth a try, a try because you're not for profit, right?
Right.
And it's, I understand land is important and I understand it's pricey. But that seems like an exorbitant amount of money for an assessment to me.
We can definitely try in the future to.
Oh, we got you over there, Taylor, sorry.
I'm hiding. We can wait long, but yes, I can, I can take those steps forward to try to.
It might be.
Deal to them, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and through the mayor, just for clarity, the, the status or the type of individual or society or that has a property has no impact on taxation or on assessment, I should say. It, it wouldn't matter if you owned the property as opposed to the East Lillawet Rec Center or Rec Society, sorry, leasing it, it would still have the same assessment.
I understand that. I just know that the people that do the intake and the interview and whatnot are pretty sympathetic to various different things. And they're done that, so I do understand that part. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing that, I'll call the, we have a motion on the table for a full permissive. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, heard.
Y'all vote for every lady.
Really? Okay. I just wanted to say something in my closest, okay, go ahead.
Just to all the applicants there. In section H on the application form, there is a part that says that tax exemptions from the district are required to be publicly acknowledged for the exemption. I just bring that up because I don't think I've ever seen that acknowledgement given by anybody who has received the permissive tax exemptions. Out of all of the, seven of the applications, even on their form where it says, have you received a tax exemption? Didn't even list it on the form. So I'm just asking that these exemptions that you have asked are being paid out by other members in the community. So it is, it is an added financial weight, which we have discussed before there. So I would just like to see some acknowledgement because you are acknowledging for the people who are taking up those portion of the taxes. So I would just like to see some acknowledgement, because you are acknowledging for the people who are taking up those portion of the taxes. That's all, that's my submission.
Thank you. Okay. I think I have to make a motion on anything else, so I'm gonna go on to number six. Rise and Report. I have a rise and report on my phone here. So I just received this at 5:40. Temporary service interruption at Lilwet Hospital Emergency Department. Lilwet area residents are advised of the temporary changes to the emergency department hours at Lilwet Hospital due to limited physician availability. The emergency services will be unavailable from 7:00 PM tonight until 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. So patients can access World and Land Hospital and Chemlos during this time. So that is three hours notice, and that, well, yeah. So I'm gonna turn this over to our CAO.
For call.
This is bullshit.
Okay.
This is bullshit. You're gonna shut this place down.
No, thank you. We all feel the same, but we can't do that in a council meeting.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I think we all feel the same, I think we all feel the absolute same. I, I think it definitely comes from, it definitely from a staff perspective. And I apologize for being on the phone, because this just shows exactly some of the challenges the staff are going through. So we're sitting here tonight in a council meeting, and everyone that's involved in putting out notifications, or us contacting the province, or us contacting the void alert are here, so we can notify the public. Same thing happened at the weekend, where we were, actually, I was traveling back from UBCM, we're traveling back, sorry, guys. Sorry, just a little bit distracted when we're trying to talk. Sorry, a bit distracted, something, sorry. When we're coming back from UBCM at the weekend, I was traveling back to go to Kelowna to see my kids. And then on the way back, we got an alert to basically say, we're closing in two hours, which meant I had to pull over to the side of the road, hit wifi, and then try and make two hours worth of phone calls to then upload onto the website. We are not financially getting any contributions from interior health for this, so it adds to your taxes. So we're now not in a position, unfortunately, we're now not in a position to keep putting out void alerts and using staff time because of this exact reason. We're sitting in meetings and we get notifications. So unless you want us to keep shutting things down and using staff time and spending extra money for it, we've asked interior health to do a better job. I've been on the phone 18 times this morning to interior health to discuss this, and we're really not getting much back from them. We understand that it's not just an interior health problem, and we understand that we need to help interior health as much as we can, but we can't just keep putting out void alerts and using up staff time. Unfortunately, as of tonight, as of the weekend, we're really not in a position to keep putting out void alerts. We will update our website tonight or at some point to tell people how to get the information or where to get the information from. But we need to step back from this and ask interior health to do better.
Thank you.
Can't interior health?
Sorry.
Sorry, we can't, we can't do that, okay? So it is costing us, and if you look at, just say $500, every time we put out a void alert, if there's 100 of them in a year, which, I mean, they're, they're ramping up, right? That's $50,000. And other communities are not doing this, interior health won't help us, the province won't help us. So we really have to look at another alternative method, because I mean, when it comes to healthcare, we all agree, we're all met. We're a very tenacious group in, in, you know, stating what we have to say. And trust me, we're doing so much behind the scenes as well, but, you know, we have to, we have to put this back on interior health. Interior health has to feel this, because they're the ones that are responsible for, and I say three hours, because I, I had a heads up that it might be coming, and we just got it now. So, you know, I'm just got another call about it right here. I don't know what else to do for it, except for to put it back on interior health. I encourage everybody to write their letters to interior health, tell them how much we need our hospital. This is absolutely not acceptable. So I'm gonna leave that, that's our rise and report for tonight.
And to the mayor, and, and not to interrupt, but would, would you be able to share where people could address a letter? Okay, and I can post that to our Facebook and website? Just so that people would?
Yes.
Thank you, sort of.
Okay, so we can, yeah. So we'll put that on our website, where you can write a letter or address your concerns and
Yes.
and we can do that, but I know that the hospital is doing everything that they can too. And literally, it kills them. Saying, no, can't help you, but we're all in here, you know? Okay, with that, we don't really have any media or public question period on our committee as a whole. So I am going to ask somebody to move that the September 24th, 2024 committee as a whole meeting be adjourned. Counselor, we, Counselor McCarry, all in favor? Thank you all for coming out.
Remember where to hold October the 19th.
We have an all candidates meeting on October 10th in the June 8th.
I'll be there.
Everybody is welcome.